I'm calling to order the October 28th meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Chapters 107 of the Acts of 2022, which suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to participate remotely as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, you can dial 1-408-650-3123 with access code 235235861, or the public can join via computer at global.gotomeeting.com/join/235235861. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the post agenda. This meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone else in the audience recording? Seeing none, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one individual signed up for public comment. Mr. Rafferty, if you would like to speak.
Good evening, Alan Rafferty, 18th Paul Street. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for having public comment in the Town of Auburn. In the Town of Oxford, which is controlled by the Republican Party exclusively, they do not offer any public comment whatsoever. And those people are not afforded to comment on anything that is happening. So once again, I thank the Board of Selectmen here in the Town of Auburn for providing this opportunity to the public. I'm here tonight to mention quickly about what happened at the latest zoning board of appeal meeting. At the zoning board of appeal meeting, which by the way lasted five and a half hours long, five and a half hours, making people who came from out of town wait till the end. They, of course, have discontinued remote access. Why they stacked so many hearings in one meeting, I'll never understand that. Be that as it may, they talked about the Perry Place project. And at that meeting, and I rewatched it so that I could paraphrase it as accurately as I could, co-chair Marin acknowledged that the zoning board of appeals could kill the Perry project, but he said that the developer could sue the town and would automatically win, and repeated it a second time, that in all likely, they would win. Mr. Tatchell said, the chairman says, "If we deny the project, the developer can go to the state and circumnavigate the town," and that there was nothing we could do about it. Despite that, the ZBA could vote no in giving the permit, but there's nothing they can do about it. The logic of that escapes me. Perhaps it's because recently, the planning board of the Town of Auburn denied a project, but then at a subsequent meeting, they came back and approved the project because they were told by the town council that the town could be sued, and that they individually could be sued, which I don't believe is accurate, because if anyone here can be individually sued, you're in a lot of trouble. The town protects you. By making these statements at this meeting, they compromised their ability to negotiate with the developer. They basically said, "We give up. There's nothing we can do. You're going to sue us. We're going to give you what you want." They completely compromised the negotiating position of the town, deferring to the developer and ignoring the residents. And at one point, Mr. Marin stopped Danny Lages, who was talking, and he insinuated that the ZBA had no backbone. Well, he disagreed with that and stopped him from saying that, which of course is stopping his freedom of speech. As we all know, there have been recent judgments, you're not to stop people from saying anything that they want. And yet, he stopped Mr. Lages from giving his opinion. I have been told that the ZBA is not controlled by the Board of Selectmen, that they're not supposed to influence the zoning board of appeals, but you do appoint them, which means you do exercise a modicum of control over who is appointed to the zoning board of appeals. I think that in the future, given what this ZBA has been doing, that the selectmen have to show better judgment at who you are appointing to this board, because they are not doing the residents of the town any favors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will note, we do have a member participating remotely tonight, so all of our votes will be taken by roll call vote. I just want to make sure that Mr. Carpenter is able to hear us. Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Carpenter, are you able to hear us? He's not muted.
Can you put something in the chat?
Mike Moreno, can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay. Dan responded that he is able to hear us, so thank you for that. We're in our agenda, we are on number four, community organizations. We have none. We have no presentations or public hearings. We have departmental items. We have the DPW director. Joanna, would you like to come up? Will you move this one up?
Yep.
Okay. Next, after this? Can we do it after this one?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
The last Board of Selectmen meeting, there was some comments made at the public comment section, and I just wanted to address all those comments. I know that there were some questions about sidewalks, so I wanted to give a quick summary on some of the progress that we've made. So, one of the concerns that the board had about the safety at the corner of Bryn Mawr and Warren Road. So, I know that that project was in the planning stage for a long time. It was delayed because the pump station project was delayed, but we did put stone dust, basically, in between the roadway and the pump station. I wanted to be very careful about where the walkway was going to be, because we did have a few incidences of cars going off the road and not making that turn. So, we had put some plantings there, planted some trees, so that visually people could see that the road is ending or the road is turning, and as well as we put a berm in, so before somebody flies off the road, they have a little bit of a wake-up call, in addition to the distance between the roadway and the walkway, just to keep that vehicular and the pedestrian public, traveling public, separate. So, we put stone dust just to be more mindful about the stormwater. It's not a sidewalk. That would take a much longer planning process, but just to keep that, you know, those pedestrians safe and off the road, we just did that in the last week or so. Along with that, we have been making progress on the prioritization plan that was prepared at the beginning of the year, and so we're looking to contract with some land surveyors and some wetland scientists, so that we can gather data along Wall Shav and construct a sidewalk to connect Auburn Youth and Family Services, that area, and the center of town, the high school, the schools. So, we'll be looking to design that sidewalk over the winter, depending on the schedule of those consultants that we contract with.
Thank you. Do board members have questions?
So, you mentioned more plannings needed for the Bryn Mawr, Warren Ave. What is the plan on that, like to get that going? Is it, "We need to plan," or we're in the process of planning?
So, the Bryn Mawr Ave, it was more of an immediate need. It was highlighted as a safety issue to try to get pedestrians off the road, but more of a, to put sidewalks in, we would need to have the locations surveyed, we'd need to have wetland flags mapped, and do a full-out design, including stormwater. And when you put in sidewalks, you're including impervious trapping water with the curbing along the way, so it's more of a full-on design. So, the immediate need to keep those pedestrians off the road has been addressed, but we're also moving towards going through the prioritization plan and looking at those, the needs of, you know, everybody in town, including, you know, the schoolchildren that we want to keep off the streets.
So, we don't know where that falls in the prioritization to get long-term solution there?
So, I mean, I have the prioritization plan with me. It wasn't as highly rated as many of the other sites, but it was included on the prioritization plan.
And not to hold you to it, but like through that, if you were to guess, are we three years out from a real solution, a year out, or 10 years out?
This is a much longer plan, so it would, I would expect it to be definitely more than several years out, because this is, it's a longer list.
And I just want to be able to set that expectation, because that has been brought to the select board several times. There's an immediate action, and I appreciate that that's finally, the safety issue is not as big a concern, but at the same time, we're going to hear unless we talk to the residents and let them know it's on the plan, but on the plan, you know, I think a timeline's needed in order for us to set the expectation. This is the immediate, it should resolve the safety concerns, but a long-term solution is several years out. So, I just want to make sure when we're getting complaints from that, that the follow-up is, yes, we've done something immediately, because they're going to critique it and say, "This isn't permanent."
Right.
And unless someone's having that conversation, they're going to come back and say, "You guys don't know what you're doing. And it sounds like you took the immediate first steps, and we're at a decent place, but a long-term solution is several years out."
Correct. Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that we're setting that expectation, especially when they come before the board asking for help.
Absolutely. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much, Joanna.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion that we move item nine up to right now?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, it is a roll call vote. Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yep.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well, so I will let you take the floor.
Madam Chair, thank you. This undoubtedly is one of the toughest decisions and announcements that I am going to make over my 41 career in municipal government. It is with mixed emotions that I convey my intention to retire effective January 31st of 2025. It's time for me to pursue personal and family interest. I want to send a special thanks to our current and previous members of the Board of Selectmen who gave me the opportunity to serve as Auburn's Town Manager, and who worked tirelessly to represent and serve the residents of this great community. To the residents of Auburn, it has been an honor and a privilege to serve you, and will forever be grateful for instilling your trust in me, and for allowing me to serve this outstanding community. Without your continued support, the Town of Auburn would not be where it is today. Reflecting on my tenure as Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, some of the accomplishments and initiatives that I am most proud of, I'd like to highlight in no particular order. In terms of public safety, the recent acquisition of the Chucks property for the consideration of a new fire headquarters. The establishment of an EMS, ambulance service, in 2004 has allowed us to add 12 full-time firefighters to our department, and it has allowed us to build up an equity of about $5 million, where we can now purchase outright new ambulances and equipments to help to support those services. We've enhanced the town's communication fiber ring, which is allowed for better communications and the safety of our staff, and the recent implementation of the police body cams. In the function of finance...
How do I stop? Okay. We're going to have to take a quick recess. Through a roll call, roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter, or Mr. Chambers. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Sorry for that, we had some technical difficulties. I am going to turn it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll resume where I, where I believe I ended. I was just about to highlight some of the accomplishments under finance. The adoption of financial policies that have really put the position in good, excellent financial standing, which allowed us to get a double A-plus bond rating upgrade. We've built up excess levy over the years. Let's make sure this is a result of not taxing to two and a half. I'm most proud of the fact that we created also in 2004 a self-insured trust that allows us to offset our increasing annual health cost by leveraging some of that equity towards the increase...
I want to...
Okay, you got it.
The creation of a school spedita, which we recently transferred funds out of there for unanticipated costs that was not known at the beginning of the year. The creation of an OPEB trust, which has a current balance of about $9.2 million. Continued funding over the years to our stabilization account, annual contribution of tax levy a one-tenth of Prop 2.5 towards our five-year capital program, and the utilization of a free cash policy that allows us to use 50% of the net gain towards one-time capital purchases, and it provides a vehicle to fund our OPEB and stabilization accounts. Under DPW, most proud of the fact of the creation of a Veterans Memorial Corridor on Route 12, the creation of a recent roadway and sidewalk program, the creation and reorganization of a facilities division, and fleet division, and the recent reorganization of a fleet division under DPW. Under DDIS and Economic Development, most proud of the sale and recent development for additional senior housing at Mary D. and J. B., the recent online permitting module utilized through Open Gov through our Inspection Services Division, $100,000 grant for a town-wide wave-finding signage, the recent completion of a five-year housing production plan, a five-year mitigation plan, the revitalization of Jury Square-Brotherton Way, roadway and beautification projects in the area, and the implementation of a municipal aggregation program that offers relief to our residents in reduced utility costs. Under POCS and REC, most proud of the construction and development of the Papas Memorial Complex, the town taking over and managing our public golf course, and the successful implementation with the utilization of our funds to help support our summer rec program. In the education side, the construction of the new high school and middle school, the recent combining of a school in town HR functions, and the recent ongoing automation of Munis Employee Self-Service modules. Despite all of what I have highlighted as personal and career accomplishments, there is much more still to be done. I pledge to you that I will remain laser-focused until my departure, and will do my best to ensure a seamless and smooth transition. The road I have traveled has been a rewarding experience, and I still have many miles to travel, despite the fact that my headlights are getting dim and my tires are balding, somewhat like my hair. The journey I've been on would not have been successful or possible without the assistance of a superb management team, and all those who helped toe the line. For that, a special thanks to Assistant Town Manager Dory Vecchio, Police Chief Todd Lemon, Fire Chief Steve Coleman, Deputy Chief Scott Mills and Glenn Johnson, our Chief Financial Officer Karen Harnoyes, DPW Director Joanna Paquin, DDIS Director Darlene Coyle, IT Director Mike Moreno, Town Clerk Ginger Boutel, School Department Superintendent Beth Chamberlain, all division heads and their assistants, and all other town personnel who helped advance our mission and cause. In closing, after 30 years of being employed by the town, I am prepared to write my final chapter. Auburn and its residents will always hold a special place in my heart. Thank you to everyone. Much appreciated. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I would like to thank you for all of your service and everything you've done, and congratulate you on your retirement.
Thank you, Senator.
John Lojendun. Congratulations. Thank you, and get a lot of work before you leave us.
We have a lot of work to do, and...
Don't take your rest yet.
I couldn't agree with you more, so...
Thank you.
...allow for that seamless transition, so we'll do what we can to make that possible.
Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you, Ann.
Dan, I think if you would like to say anything, you can unmute yourself.
I'm a little afraid after what just happened. Geez, Ed, I didn't expect that visual display with your goodbye message, so let's hope that we don't have any recurrences. I want to echo what the chair and the other members said. You know, I've been involved in town government almost as long as you've been an employee of the town, so I've had an opportunity to see you in a lot of different roles, and I just wish you the best of luck, and look forward to these last few months, and we want you to go out on a high.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Can we move up to Article 14?
Yeah, just to next. Okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion that we move item 8B up to our next, to be next, that would be the Special Tom Meaning Warrant Voting Recommendations.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well.
Make a motion that we move up Article 14?
Is there a second?
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Article 14 is the town clerk. So, you could tell us a little bit about your article?
So, the article is for, we received an email from the company that we use the iPads for, which is the PollPads, for checking in for election, and then Town Meeting Members for town meetings. They are Generation 5 that we have. They are, they're Macs for updating for their software, so they're not going to be any use to us by the end of 2025. So, we're looking to replace those. So, I do have some, the $10,000 from 2023 Town Meeting, that I'm looking to repurpose to replace these PollPads. The ones that we'll be getting will be a Generation 10.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions?
This question, are we continuing to update and preserve the books and the records that we have?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the books and records, I still have the $10,000 from this past Town Meeting. It's just, I don't want to go, if I have this $10,000 from 2023, I don't want to go and ask the town for more money to replace the PollPads when I can just...
And thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
Mr. Carpenter, have anything?
Certainly, Mr. Carpenter, do you have a question?
I don't, thank you.
I'll second.
Dan, did you have a question?
He said no, thank you.
Oh, no, thank you, sorry. Thank you. Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any others that need to be moved up, or we want to start with one?
No, that's, I mean, we can go through the rest of the warrant, and then make the, set the classification hearing, since we're on this item. So, do we want, are there any questions on warrant articles? Do we want to take them piece by piece, or do we want, are there things we can take a whole? Okay. Are there any questions on Article 2?
I have a couple. I'm questioning, the fire overtime is being increased from 335,000 to 435,000. I want to make sure that's going to be enough, and I just want to hear from the chief on that, please.
Good evening. Thank you for the question through the chair. The answer, Mrs. Kavanaugh, is that we don't know. The, all of the articles that we have that are putting money into overtime, the last time we were before finance, a couple of weeks ago, the conversation of overtime has been coming up repeatedly. And what the deputy and I have been in the process of doing over the last week and a half or so, is we're doing a comparative study of departments of our similar size, call volume, because at the end of the day, really, those are the only two metrics that matter, right? As you know, you can compare communities by a lot of different metrics, but at the end of the day, what we're trying to figure out is, what is the average overtime use of a department that runs 5,300 calls a year with a staff, or a minimum staffing, at the same size as us? And at the end of the day, really, those are the two major metrics that we're looking at. And what we've discovered over the last couple of weeks is that our overtime line is severely underfunded. I think, I'll say that I was surprised as to what some of the overtime budgets were. I think finance will be surprised, but as I had told finance at previous meetings, our overtime has been level-funded for five years. Our overtime has been reduced overtime. We've made some strides to get back, but when you look at sort of what we're operating for a total overtime budget, we've had essentially the same overtime budget for over 10 years. So, I think that's information that I've talked to the town manager about. We're going to meet with the finance committee to show them the results of that. But those are the words that I'm using at this point, is our overtime is severely underfunded. I know that there is concern with overtime for both the finance committee and the, you know, the selectmen, you know, raise it. But, you know, the same thing that I said to the finance committee is, I think overtime sometimes is looked at negatively. You know, we try to get a handle on overtime, but the reality is, is that overtime is, it's a necessity between emergency callbacks, trying to get people to maintain shifts. These are things that have to just be built into the operating budget over the course of a year, and our overtime has been underfunded for many, many years. So, I understand that with the amount that we've transferred in over the last year, and again, some of that was due to employee circumstances. At one point last year, I was down 12 positions. At one point last year. That's, what, you know, I posed the question somewhat rhetorically, but what do you want me to do about that? It's, those are really circumstances that are not foreseen, and we have to try to overcome those. But I know that specifically from the Finance Committee, they've been concerned about the amount of money that's, that's being infused into overtime in terms of transfers. But the reality is, is that the money that we're actually putting in there in terms of transfers, that's really what should be budgeted on an annual basis. So I just, I want the public to understand, I want our elected and appointed officials to understand that, you know, when, when we use words like, you know, overtime is out of control, I disagree with that statement. Because when you say that something is out of control, that leads people to believe that you don't know why it's happening and that you can't control what is going on. That's not the case. I can tell you exactly why it's happening. You know, it's not, you served many years on the Finance Committee, you know, we break our overtime down into 36 categories. I can tell you where every cent of overtime goes, right? So it's not a fair statement to say that overtime is out of control, because we know exactly where every penny is. The accurate statement is overtime is underfunded. Now, do I think that there are areas where we need to, you know, I guess I'll use the word rein in? We do, but again, some of those areas are outside of our control. There are employee resignations, or there are people leaving, or there are IODs. You know, as of right now, I have five people that are not working because they're injured. One is an on-duty injury, the other four are off-duty injuries. I don't know what to do about preventing people from getting hurt when they're home, but when they're out for five or six weeks, that has an impact to the department. When you go back in history and you look over the last 10 years, we have four to five people out every year for injuries, but that's not budgeted for. You know, and I understand why we do it. We try to keep sort of a, of a razor-thin line. We, I know the strategy, you know, we've, and it's always said, like, listen, we, if we need overtime, we'll come back, we'll find a way to get it. You know, that's always been the strategy. But I, I just, I feel like over the last couple of years, we're maybe forgetting that that is the strategy, and there's more criticism about why we're so underfunded, not recognizing that that's typically the strategy. But as employees' salaries grow, you know, by a percentage for cost of living on an annual basis, but the overtime is level funded, well, the overtime, the amount of overtime hours doesn't go away, it just means we can provide less hours for that, for that value. So I think that there's a lot to digest here. It's a conversation I'm really looking forward to having with, with the Finance Committee and the Manager and showing them the data. But it's, you know, it's surprising, and we're, we're about, we're about a third or about a quarter of what most agencies are with our call volume and our shift size. We're about a quarter funded of what all of those other agencies are from an overtime perspective. But I just want the Board to know that this is not an out-of-a-control situation. We know exactly why it's happening, we can point to you exactly why it's occurring. It's just, in my opinion, it's we don't have enough money in the annual budget to support what the real need is. Thank you.
Through the Chair. Chief, I know we've talked before at several meetings about staffing, and that, that was now with new hires, that was going to help the overtime budget, and I believe you mentioned during the Finance Committee that most of those new hires should be on their own or take full-time shifts in January, I believe.
Yes, yeah.
So I know we talked before, and that was going to help some of that solution. So now you're saying you've looked deeper into it, and there's more than just that as, at issue, but I want to just confirm, has the new hire in staffing, is that going to help reduce the amount of overtime funding in the past year? And I know you can't predict when.
Well, so, yes, the, the answer to the question globally is yes. We're sort of facing an issue right now that is a short-term problem, because we have six employees that have come on between August and September, that two just got out of the Fire Academy, we have three starting the Fire Academy in a couple of weeks, and then, so when they come back, they have about 90 days of field training. And again, you have to remember, and you know, you said this a bunch, Mr. Chambers, you know, we want to make sure we're bringing the right people into the organization, which I couldn't agree more with. The people that we've happened to bring into the organization recently, you know, they're as green as a stick. You know, four of them have never sat in a fire truck until they were hired. You know, two of them are brand-new paramedics. So, you know, much like the Police Department, you can't bring these people out of the Academy and throw them by themselves in an ambulance or on a fire truck and expect them to perform at the level, really at any level, let alone the level that we ultimately expect. So there is a field training portion, but right now, I'm still sort of in the same boat that I was last year. I have six members currently on field training, two back from the Academy, three about to go away, right? So that's five on field training, and then I still have five injuries. So I'm really 10 positions down, you know, in the global scheme. So although our minimum staffing is nine, right, our minimum staffing's nine, but there are days where I may have 10 or 11 people working, and they're on overtime, because if I have two people on a group that are in field training that don't count towards the shift minimum, we still have to bring on people in order to maintain nine in order to operate the day. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel when it comes to the people who are in field training, and ultimately, yes, when I have all 44 members, in a perfect world, if we had 44 members working, nobody was hurt, everybody's off of field training, everybody's working, yes, we will see a reduction in the overtime that we're spending now by allowing the two people off. The problem comes is what we are budgeted is still not enough to maintain the shift minimum of nine with everybody working. So there's still a shortfall. Even in a perfect world, we're still underfunded by a portion, by a portion of money. But yes, globally, you're absolutely right. Once everybody's off of field training and everybody's working, and if we're not covering injuries, whether they're on duty or off duty, yes, there will be a decline in the overtime. But again, there still has to be an increase in the budget in order to support that minimum level.
Madam Chair, if I may, if I could just add to that. I think one of the elements that changed over the past several years is we used to have an insurance policy that allowed for a weekly payroll benefit. And as we were seeking premium quotes, the insurance companies who covered that weekly payroll were passing that cost on through an increase in premium. That really made it cost prohibitive. That's something we continue to take a look at. We look at the cost analysis based upon the amount of money we're transferring in to the OT line, as well as what is a premium going to do for us if we do have a weekly benefit? So we, we weigh that on an annual basis. Additionally, I think some of the costs that we have no control of that are really driving that number is these IOD claims. Like the Chief said, at one point, they were 12 down, and that is really a driving factor on, on the cost side of the overtime. So we try to put a focus on training and wellness that keeps firefighters healthy. We address some of the injuries that they are experiencing through that training to help, to help address any potential future claims that may result from work-related injuries.
Just one other point, and Mrs. Kavanaugh will remember this as a former Finance Committee member, is when we had Call Firefighters, the Call Firefighter Line was budgeted somewhere around, at one point it was probably as high as 150, as low as 120. But over the last several years, as the Call Firefighters were dwindling, and we were not able to fill those part-time shifts, and we were not getting callback from, from Call Firefighters, that was a built-in, like, $120,000 that I was able to transfer from the Call Firefighter Line into overtime, where I didn't have to go to the reserve fund or I didn't have to go somewhere else to find it. I just took it from the part-time wages and I put it into overtime. Well, when the Call Firefighters disappeared, my total overall budget reduced by $120,000. So even, even when my overtime, just call it, we'll say, back at that time, it was probably around 280, it's only at 330 now, but when it was 280, it really was 400, because I was able to kind of utilize that 120 from the part-time firefighters automatically sort of every year until, you know, in overtime, because we were only filling a portion of those shifts. So if you really think about it, maybe six or seven years ago, I had 400,000 within my budget that I could use for overtime, and now I'm down to 330. So between that, and then level funded for five years, I mean, in all reality, when you kind of map it out, I should probably be at a minimum 200,000 more than I was six or seven years ago. So unfortunately, it's, it's just hasn't caught up, but the Manager, the Assistant Manager, the CFO, everybody's been great. Like, we know what the issue is. We recognize it, we look forward to working with the Finance Committee. I think when we lay it out to the Finance Committee, it's, it's going to be very clear for them in terms of what the issue is, but we look forward to addressing it. Like I joked with the Finance Committee, because they joke that they're tired of talking. Nobody is tired about talking overtime more than me. So I would love to be able to just kind of address this and sort of move on, but that's essentially the basis between all of those articles. And I think it's a great use of the money. I'm glad that the Manager supported the sale between that engine and the fire truck, because again, right, it's outside money that we're not going to have to go to the reserve for, and it'll, it'll try to get us, you know, over that hump at least for another three or four months.
Great, I just have one more, just one. So have you seen it, felt that there's been an increase in the, in the turnover in your department, more people retiring, and five years ago or 10 years ago?
Yeah, so the, when you look at the dynamic of our department, it's, it's interesting, and I don't want to dive too, too deep into it, but you know, the average age of our department, I think six years ago, seven years ago, was 39. I think the average age now, because we've brought in quite a few people in their 20s, some in their very early 20s, it's actually a number that, as part of this kind of study, we're looking at again, because I'm curious to see if the overtime, if the average age has gone up or down. We haven't, the department as a whole, in our history, has not really seen a lot of retirements. We've had people that have retired through disability, because they've been injured and had surgeries where they weren't able to come back. We've really only had a couple members of the department that have truly retired, you know, sort of on their own, you know, accord. So I think in the next three to four years, all of the people that are on, that are in their 50s now that are kind of pushing, I think in the next three years, we're going to start seeing somewhere between six to eight retirements, because those people are going to hit their age. So I think as years come up, we're going to start seeing some more. But again, that's something that ebbs and flows, because once, let's say in four years, once a lot of those people in their 50s ultimately retire, you're probably going to see another 10- to 12-year period where there's not really a lot of retirements, because now you've got those 30s and 20s that are, you know, kind of working their way there. But no, that, you know, the Deputy and I, the Deputy made a comment at the last Selectman's meeting, and, and you know, he kind of misspoke a little bit. I think, he said, what he said, I think Finance interpreted it differently. He said that we have a lot of turnover in the department. We actually haven't really had a lot of, lot of turnover. We've had a few retirements, we've had some people leave, you know, to go to other organizations, but there hasn't really been a lot of turnover. A lot of the new people that we brought in, those were new positions that the Board and the Finance Committee over the last couple of years have supported. So we brought in like eight, eight or nine new people based on new positions, but we've probably only lost maybe three, you know, in terms of, of, you know, real turnover. But I think in the next couple of years, probably three years, that'll probably be the biggest exodus of people retiring, just because it took 25, 30 years to kind of get there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do Board members have any other questions on Article 2? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 2.
Is there a second?
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And the Chair is a yes as well. So moving on to Article 3, are there any questions for Article, on Article 3? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 3.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 4?
I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 4.
Second.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 5?
I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 5.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 6?
I make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 6.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Is there any questions on Article 7?
Yeah, through the Chair. Ms. Kaznovich, what is our Town Stabilization Fund balance?
Our stabilization fund is about 5.8 million.
5.8?
I don't have that number.
Okay.
I know you asked for the OPEB earlier, I do have that, but my recollection is about 5.8 million.
Thank you. I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 7.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Are there questions on Article 8?
Yes, through the, through the Chair. Ms. Kaznovich, what is our, I see we're putting $500,000 into our OPEB trust fund. What is our OPEB liability?
So as of the last audit, as of June 30th, 2024, our net liability OPEB is 53.6 million. We have about a $9.2 million balance, which would put our OPEB overall liability at 63, but we're funded by 9.2, so that nets out to about 53.6.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a recommendation?
I make a motion, recommend approval on Article 8.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 9? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, recommend approval for Article 9.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The Chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 10?
I have a question. Can, Ms. Kaznovich, can you tell us about this new account?
So the Fire Department requested a contingency account, and I think this really came to light, especially over COVID, when we were, we were really blowing through medical supplies to help service COVID patients and, and other medical needs. So this would set up a contingency, just like any other reserve account, and they would have to come before you for a transfer to utilize those funds when necessary.
Okay. Are there any additional questions? Is there a motion?
So, I'm sorry.
It's all good.
How are they currently funding this? Obviously, there's a need. What is the current process?
Sure. So right now, 100% of the EMS operation is funded through ambulance receipts, and the only way that we can access that money is through a town meeting vote. So take the individual line item within our budget for medical supplies, that, that's funded from the ambulance receipts. But as the cost of medications and just disposables and other stuff has gone up, we've had to transfer money from like other areas of the budget, or we've, in the past, we've, we've used some ARPA funds. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to establish an account, and it's not, the plan is to not have it be $75,000 a year. The plan is to start it off with $75,000. Maybe we go two years, and you know, it gets down to 10,000, and then when we come up to a town meeting, we'll vote to appropriate it to bring it back, you know, to 75. So our plan is, the Town Manager will tell you, I'm, I'm So our plan is, the town manager will tell you, I'm, I'm very, I watch the ambulance receipts like a hawk. I'm very protective of the ambulance receipts, as is the manager. So the intent is not to just do $75,000 a year. One of the struggles that we have is, the equipment that we have is so expensive. Take a, take a cardiac monitor. That's a $35,000 piece of equipment. If we break a cardiac monitor today that has to be replaced, I have, I have, there's nowhere where I could access $35,000 to replace a, a monitor without either going to the stabilization fund or a town meeting. Either one will require a town meeting vote. So we're trying to have sort of a contingency fund set aside, that in the event we break a hall, a, a high-dollar item, or something needs to be replaced, or even just as a supplement to the medical supplies line, we have the ability to draw that. But knowing that town meeting is the only way that we can access that, that's why we requested the contingency fund. But we also want it to certainly have what over, whatever oversight either the board or the finance committee has, like, we're not opposed to coming and, you know, to a, a body to say, hey, this is what we'd like to do. This is what we want to spend the money. And we've said from the beginning, we'll leave that up to the board of selectmen and the finance committee to decide whatever parameters you want to put on the spending of that money. But that's the idea behind it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Um, I make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 10.
Second.
Um, through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Um, we are on Article 11. Are there any questions on Article 11?
I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 11.
Second.
Um, through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Um, we are on Article 12. Are there any questions on Article 12? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 12.
Second.
Um, through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 13?
Um, yes, is this, um, through the chair, is this, um, money used to, um, for the design process? Or is this actually for hiring an individual?
So through the chair, um, if you recall, we voted our $4.6 million out of free cash for the acquisition of property on 10 Prospect Street.
Yep.
Formerly known as Struck Steakhouse. There's a balance of 514,000, of which a portion of that, roughly 180,000, is committed for the demolition of the building, which is to occur shortly. Couple of weeks.
Yep.
And I will let the fire chief talk about the desire for $100,000 that was voted by the building committee.
Yep.
For the purposes and oversight of, uh, design and, um, basically layout of a proposed building that will go to the voters, into town meeting, uh, because that's when we want to do our due diligence, to trim and to account for every square foot in that building, uh, in the most prudent and financial manner.
Uh, through the chair, um, so we, we have a lot of great members on, on this committee. Very pleased, actually, with the makeup of the committee. We have a lot of, uh, there's some architects, there's some engineers, there's some construction people. They have, uh, I'm really kind of speaking, I guess, for the committee, uh, at this point. So as you can see, this is an article that was requested by the fire station building committee. They have a desire to hire an owner's project manager. As you may or may not know, any municipal-funded project over a million dollars requires that the town hire an owner's project, project manager to work on our behalf. So the committee is looking to repurpose 100,000 out of the remaining money. Um, the, the demolition bid came in at $187,000, so it came in well under budget, what we anticipated. So there is money still left, uh, once we add up, uh, the engineering, some of the other things, that, that 100,000 exists within that half a million or so, um, after the sale. Uh, so they're looking to bring on an OPM after the first of the year to consult with the committee, uh, sort of in the conceptual designs and kind of fine-tuning the number that will ultimately be brought to the voters in May.
Through the chair, uh, the intent is to help them better understand what they're getting and the most value. Is their intention of keeping them on, uh, through the construction, or is this only up till, uh, town meeting?
Yeah, I, so I think, you know, and the manager has talked about this publicly, I think we all sort of have this strategy that to enter into something long-term, not knowing that we have a vote of a project, doesn't, doesn't make a lot of sense. So this 100,000, and it is an estimate that they got, we feel it's a, it's a, a good number that's going to bring on an OPM from January to May, call it June, whatever it is, um, to work with them, to fine-tune the number, uh, to make sure that, uh, the valued engineering process is overseen correctly. But it's, I don't know that there's been a definitive answer, but I think in the conversations, we'd be looking to sign a short-term contract. And then I think if, we're going to have to go up for, to bid for this anyway, so I think that the possibility always exists, that if they like this OPM and the project is approved, they could always extend the contract of the OPM. Or if they don't like them, they could let that contract expire and then go out to bid for a new OPM to, to go with the project. So I think either could occur, but I think if, if they, they're going to have to go out to bid, interview, hire the OPM. So I think if it works out, I would anticipate that the committee would look to extend the contract of that OPM once a successful vote was, uh, taken in May.
This might be more of a procedural aspect on, on that. So if this does get through and approved, the OPM would work with the fire station building committee, and like they'll be in charge of the oversight and work directly. Um, how does procurement aspect, so you would have to, town manager would have to do the hiring, correct? Or the, the bid aspect, how does that work?
Yeah, that, that would have to go out for a bid, uh, awarded and, um, and, uh, signed by the town manager, uh, recognizing the fact that they would offer oversight and support for the, for the, uh, building committee.
I just, I want to just make sure again, what they're asking for is part of that contract, which I know that piece has it, but the building committee is much like the rest of them. They're volunteers, so they, I just want to make sure that there's oversight, that they're getting what they asked for in this, and that it proves to be helpful to get to a, a situation where, where in May they have the answers.
I've been assisting the committee in drafting the, um, the RFP, and we've used, uh, some sample RFPs from some of the surrounding towns that have recently, um, bid fire stations, gone out to bid. So I've been working on, on drafting that. Ultimately, it will be approved by town council, but, um, I've been working with the committee to kind of draft the RFP for them as well.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, chief.
Is there a motion on Article 13?
Um, I make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 13.
Second.
Um, through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. Um, we have recommended Article 14. Is, are there any questions on Article 15?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 15.
Second.
Uh, through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Um, are there any questions on Article 16?
Um, just a, a question. Um, do we, I want to make sure, do, yeah. Thank you, chief. So, um, do we still, do we not need the electric fingerprint scanner anymore, or is the radio's more important at this point, or?
So great question through the chair. Um, we anticipated needing this live scan printer, which is something that we use every day, multiple times a day. We use it to process prisoners, we use it to process, um, educators and nurses that come in looking to, for their, um, for their CORY checks, and we also use it, um, for, uh, fingerprints for firearms licensing. And we were fortunate, as many other departments were across the Commonwealth, to get, uh, grant-funded for it. So as the fire chief so eloquently stated, we have some equipment that's very expensive. Uh, portable radios are running between eight and $9,000 apiece. And this will give us three radios to outfit four open positions that we have, and will give us one extra in case one goes down for, for repairs. So we thought that this was a smart, uh, repurposing of the money that was approved by the voters, and, um, it, it provides primary emergency communications, not only for our own agency, but through fire, state police, and area departments around us.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that you got a grant for the, um, fingerprint scanner, but thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we recommend approval for Article, um, 16.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we are moving along to Article 17. Are there any questions on Article 17? Is there a motion?
I recommend approval for Article 17.
Second.
Uh, through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Do we have any questions on Article 18?
Um, I, I do have a question.
Sure.
Um, 250,000, so what's the extent of this project? Is it a, is it a one-to-two-year project, or?
So, excuse me. Uh, the $250,000 would, uh, is estimated to be the, both the design bidding and construction costs for this project. So in 2022, we did our first sewer system evaluation survey. As part of that, um, we received a number of recommendations on different repairs that needed to be made, um, to our sewer system, in the areas that they surveyed. Um, one of the highest priority, um, recommendations is currently being in the design phase, it's going to be a very large project. Uh, this represents sort of a slate of about two dozen high-priority, um, items, um, sort of like the second tier down. The expectation for this would be to complete the design phase over the winter, put it out to bid probably in the spring. I would expect this to be completed next summer.
Okay. Are they, so all new manhole covers?
So this is a, a sewer and manhole rehabilitation project. A lot of this is actually sewer pipe lining, um, and other, uh, pipe rehab. There is some manhole rehabilitation, but we'll, we'll likely do those on our own to sort of save on some engineering costs that I don't think are necessary for those particular items. So a lot of this will be pipes.
Okay, thank you.
So through these 12 projects, does that get the sewer system to a standard that hasn't been achieved before? I know you guys have been working on a long-term plan, just after these 12, like, where do we stand?
Yeah, so, um, the year-one SSCEs, that Sewer System Evaluation Survey, surveyed 10% of the sewer system in, um, three specific sewer catchment areas. Um, so this would address some of the more significant, um, physical defects in those areas. Uh, the, the main purpose of this is to identify sources of inflow and infiltration into the sewer system, because that is stormwater and groundwater that we're getting into our sewer system that we're essentially paying to get treated. Um, so it creates inefficiencies at the treatment plant and its, its costs that we, um, should be able to get rid of. So, um, this, uh, the, the two largest projects are sort of longer-term, multi-year projects, multimillion-dollar projects. This represents that next tier of high priority, but not, um, like a, uh, crazy high sort of cost project. So we can kind of, um, pick off a bunch of low-hanging, but still very important, um, fruits. Now, we're going to do another section of town this coming year, probably another 10%. The intent is to survey about 10% of the town over 10 years, so we, we get the whole town surveyed, and then we can sort of address those issues as we find them.
So 10% of the town's been surveyed to, to date?
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
All right, um, Madam Chair, I make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 18.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Thank you. Um, we are on Article 19. Are there any questions?
Is this, I'm sorry, is this to help the survey? Are we looking to do internal surveys, or are your surveys all external, or?
So, um, in the year-one SSCEs project, um, a good 40% of the cost of that was to contract with an outside CCTV inspection company that also did manhole inspections. We looked at how we can bring down the costs of this project, and, and we, we determined that bringing some of these services in-house would save us quite a bit of money. So that year, we purchased a CCTV inspection camera, um, sort of a remote-control camera that goes through the sewers. And we've been kind of ramping up our efforts with that, and the intent when we do the next year's, uh, SSCEs survey, we would do those services in-house, and we still need a contract with an engineering firm to do a couple other components of that survey, and then, and compile the results and couple of the recommendations. But we, we can save some costs of contracting out the CCTV, um, inspection work and doing that in-house. So we, we bought that, we use, currently use a trailer that's, um, I think that was gifted to us years ago. And it's, it's really, not, not only is it incredibly cumbersome to use, it's, it's oversized, but it's really on its last legs. Right now, so this article's sort of hand-in-hand with the next article that you're going to look at. Uh, we, we had $80,000 appropriated in our capital budget last year to replace one of our pickup trucks, and we sort of determined that that wasn't the best use of our money. Um, we have two working pickup trucks that aren't, that don't need to be retired. We have a third that's ready to be retired, but we don't really need three. So we want to retire our pickup truck, and instead of buying a third, we buy a, uh, van capable of housing the CCTV equipment, so that we can use that to much more effectively and, and quickly, um, do some of these inspections.
Thank you. I'll have a question on Article 20.
Okay. Um, so for Article 19, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we recommend approval for Article 19.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Moving on to Article 20, if you would like, with your questions?
So, um, will this vehicle be able to do other aspects? I know you said you don't really need the third vehicle, but is it solely for the CCTV and transporter that?
Yeah, so the, the intent is that it, it will act as a third vehicle, be able to have maintenance equipment in there, we'll be able to use it, we're driving to a pump station, or, or doing any kind of work. Um, the only thing it won't be able to do that the pickup trucks can do, it, I don't think it'll, I don't think we'll put a plow on it. But other than that, it'll be, it's not just going to sit in the garage when we're not, um, doing CCTV. It'll be a, a third vehicle that the guys can use every single day.
And without a plow, it'll probably last longer.
Yeah, right, that's a good point. Yeah, right, that's a good point.
Is there, are there any other questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 20.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We are moving along to Article 21. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval for Article 21.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Chair is a yes as well. Are there any questions on Article 22?
I don't know if it's specific to 22, but is there ever a point where the golf course retained earnings can be used for other funds? Or is it strictly golf course and it can never be changed?
It is an enterprise account, and it can only be used to support the golf course itself.
And that's how it's set up, but it could be if it went back to town meeting or some. And I just ask, because as they grow, and I know they're doing rehabs and lots of projects, but one of the benefits of having something in town that does that, it'd be nice to be able to support some of these equipment usage and stuff, but.
The way it was proposed and voted by town meeting only allows for the use of golf course related expenditures.
Are there any questions on Article 22?
Yes, I just, what percentage of the course will get the carts? Will this be all the, so we're looking at $100,000 for paving cart paths and make golf course, so will all the cart paths be done? Because I know it's, this is a revenue enhancement too, because if you can use the carts on more days, then, you know, that's, you get more revenue coming in.
Correct. So, a large portion of our revenue is from cart rentals. I don't think that we can, we can address all the paths, but the ones that are more problematic, that get washed out, we're looking to do a little bit more drainage and be able to, yeah, have all our golfers go through the carts a little bit easier, a little bit less wear and tear on the golf carts too.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we recommend approval on Article 22.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Our final article is Article 23. Are there any questions?
So, again, I don't know the full scope of these, but have these been priced out by other people? Or is this just what's expected? I just, I see 100,000 for paving and then 80,000 for dirt, so.
So, we're looking at four bunkers, about $20,000 each. And we're, you know, expecting to do a little bit, you know, there's going to be some implications, so not just the liner and the sand, but drainage and, so total price, about $20,000 per.
Is there a motion?
I just want to make a comment first, that I'm glad that we're putting the money into our town asset, the package out golf course, and maintaining it, so it continues to create revenue for the town, becomes, and we continue improving our asset. I make a recommendation for approval for Article 23.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers? Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. So, we have a few items we need to go back to. We finished the warrant articles. We're going back to number seven. There are no communications, so we are moving along to 8A. It is a vote, a board vote to set the tax classification hearing. The recommendation is to have it on Monday, November 18th. I will note that that is an off day for this board, so we would need to make sure everybody could attend, because it's not a normal meeting night for us.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we hold the hearing on Monday, November 18th at 6:30 PM.
Is there a second?
I just have a question, why is it on an off day?
I believe it is because of town meeting and the elections that it falls during a busy time.
That is accurate, Madam Chair. So, we met is, with the entire finance team to try to coordinate when would be the best time to bring this before the board. Unfortunately, the delay is really driven by the presidential election, the early voting, and the tie, tying up of resources in the clerk's office. So, she was unable to prepare her and her staff for typically what we normally have is a late October, fall town meeting. And now, we're in the throes of the early voting and the election busyness. So, we came up with a, that's why we delayed the town meeting to the second week in November. We can't do the classification until we know the final budget as a result of town meeting action. We need to do that on a timely basis. So, Seth, chief assessor is here. He may want to comment if necessary. That would allow him and his staff adequate time in order to get the bills out on a timely basis.
I don't object to it. I was just, I knew the election had to play and the town meeting had to play in it, but I can't speak for everyone else, but I will be available, so.
I will also be available. Mr. Carpenter, are you available that day?
As far as I know now, yes. And now that I have something on the calendar, I will not accept any other appointments.
Wonderful. So, we have a motion. Is there a second? Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. We are on 8C. It is the annual vote for the schedules of fees and fines. They are enclosed in our packets, and there have been no changes requested. Does anybody have any questions? Is, we should take them one at a time. Is there a motion for the fee schedule?
I make a motion, we recommend the fees, approve the fee schedule.
I'll second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. Is there a motion on the fine schedule?
I recommend we approve the fine schedule as presented.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We have no proclamations or recognitions. We do have some gift acceptances in our packet. Is there a motion? To accept gift acceptances?
I make a motion that we accept with gratitude the gift in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Is there?
To the DPW, DPW recreation account for $500 from Lungering Cars. And is this one that gets a letter signed?
Yes, yep.
With that as well, and do I take the separate one, Police Department for $100?
Sure. Is there a second on the gift acceptances?
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes, I just want to, the Police Department, I just want to make note, Joshua Reynolds.
No, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. We have a drain layers license in our application, in our packet. Is there a motion on the drain layers license?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the drain layer license for carco construction, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. There is a second drain layers license.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the drain layer license for S and R Corporation of Lowell, Mass, provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We are moving along to a board vote to appoint board members to a subcommittee to negotiate with the developer at 88 Wallace Ave. Are, is anyone interested in being a part of a subcommittee to negotiate?
Madam Chair, given Todd Corain's background, is he someone who could be appointed to the subcommittee?
He certainly is. I told, I was able to speak with Todd, and he said if no one else was interested, he would take that role. I was, I think this might be a good opportunity for our newly formed 4DB committee members to weigh in and negotiate.
Madam Chair, that's a, that's a working group, not a committee.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
So, their involvement, although premature, I think if they were well underway, they may serve as a resource for this, but typically, in previous negotiations, it's typically myself and a member of this board.
Okay.
Just one member?
We've had one member in the past.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would be interested in negotiations?
I'm just wondering if it's a subcommittee, or one person's subcommittee is a committee?
I guess that would be up to the board, whether they wanted to have one or two members. Certainly, negotiations would be confidential in nature. But I've done it, I think previously it was Chairman Wren, and then when he left, it was Mr. Corain.
So, if it's two, I certainly can be involved as well. If it's a single person, Mr. Corain has gone through it. I'm not opposed to him doing it again.
Madam Chair, make a motion, we appoint Steve Chambers and Todd Corain to this subcommittee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We are moving to number 10. We have no table items. Number 11, we have a member item that is the intersection, top intersections referenced by Mr. Corain per Mass DOT crash data, and the potential vote to set a public hearing. I am hesitant to set a vote without Mr. Corain here. I think it's something he certainly would want to attend, and I would want to make sure he is able to attend that. Does anybody oppose if we put?
So, I don't oppose, but I thought we were talking about some other members or people that need to be present, and I didn't know what their schedules looked like, or if the town manager could find out what would be a good time for their schedules. I don't remember everyone. I believe it was DPW, Town Planner, Police Chief, or somebody from their department. I just want to make sure that we can work on that, and if we're going to delay this, if we can come back with a proposed date.
Yeah.
That would be a better use of the delay.
Sure, is that something we could do, reach out to those departments?
I believe Mr. Corain wanted the Fire Department included as well.
And Fire, okay, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to leave anyone out. I'm sure you'd get notified, chief. The more the merrier, and the public is welcome as well. I'm sure we're not going to pull all of them, but hopefully, it's a date that many can attend.
Yes, thank you.
We just want to make sure that we're advertising it aggressively. I would like to see some of those standalone message boards out, you know, by the library, by the high school, so that we can, so the public has an opportunity to see it and be able to participate.
Thank you. But I'm sure that is something we can do. So, moving along to our second public comment. No one has signed up for second public comment. We have no meeting minutes. I would need a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair?
Second.
Through a roll call vote, Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Chambers?
Yes.
Ms. Kavanaugh?
Yes.
The chair is a yes as well. We are adjourned.